February 5th, calling to order the regular meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board. Planning Board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. This meeting is being held virtually and in person through Microsoft Teams pursuant to Section 20 of the Acts of 2021, allowing public meetings to be conducted remotely so that board and committee members, as well as members of the public, can participate remotely. Now, we do have two members who are participating online, Mr. Demalia and Ms. Dack. And in the room, I have myself that's present. Absent is Mr. Steiger and Mr. Holman. We also have our, our associate member, Mr. Russell, present. So we do have a quorum for the purpose of special permit discussions, too. So because our quorum involves online members, any votes will be taken by roll call. So with that said, do we have anybody here to come out, to comment on anything that is not on the agenda? Do we have anybody online to comment about anything that's not on the agenda? All right, appearing that there's none, first thing we have is acceptance of the minutes from the previous meeting. And the previous meeting was January 16th, 2025. The member, the minutes were made available to all of the members, and they're also in the, the member packets. So with that said, we'll take any corrections in the discussion portion. So with that said, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I will make a motion to accept the minutes.
Hearing a motion from Mr. Demalia, do we have a second?
I will second.
Hearing a second from Ms. Dack, do we have any discussion? They look pretty good to me. All right, so hearing, hearing no additional discussion, I'm calling a roll call vote. So Ms. Dack?
Dack, aye.
Mr. Demalia?
Demalia, aye.
And the chair is aye, the minutes are accepted. I would like to take the agenda slightly out of order and go to new business into the public hearing. So just to talk about this briefly from a procedural standpoint, for anybody watching online or anybody here in attendance, we did post a public meeting for tonight, but because for a public hearing for a special permit application, but because of a variety of machinations that we're going to talk about in a few moments, we're ultimately going to continue it out. So I just wanted to have everybody be prepared to be disappointed. So with that said, I'm calling to order the public hearing pursuant to the provisions of MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the Hubbardston zoning bylaws, Article 22. The Hubbardston Planning Board is holding a public hearing on Thursday, February 5th, at 6:30 in Slade Building, 7 Main Street, Hubbardston, to review the application for a special permit and site plan review of Bowie-Bertle Paper Crane Provisions LLC with regards to a proposed expansion of the commercial marijuana facility located at 56 Gardner Road, Hubbardston, Massachusetts. For the benefit of the record and for the benefit of members of the public, traditionally, when we know for certain that we're going to be going directly into the public hearing, we, we walk down the list of items in administrative rule number one so that things are presented in an orderly way. Because we're going to go and, and actually ask for a vote to continue this, we're going to skip this order a little bit, and we're going to go right into, we're going to go right into staff report. So I guess we're not actually skipping things all that much. So with that said, Alec, can you please tell us about what's been going on with this application?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chris. The application was submitted for a special permit and site plan review, both of which have a statutory requirement of a decision 90 days from the date of your opening of the public hearing. We received the applications, and only about two weeks in, we received notice back from the applicant that they wanted to put the application on hold, so to speak. At that time, we had already noticed your public hearing, and so I advised, let's just keep moving forward to the best of our ability until we sort out what the timeline's looking like. Notably, the applicant is working on revisions to a host community agreement with the town administrator and select board, and so they want to allow that process to play out completely before proceeding into an engineering review, which will cost additional dollars, and of course, before taking up more of your, as the board's time. Talking to the administrator's office, talking to the applicant's engineer, my understanding that this is not expected to be an extremely long process, and so my recommendation to both parties is to extend your public hearing. If this was to go beyond 60 days from today, we might want to consider at that point a withdrawal without prejudice to relist the public hearing, but in this case, I recommend bumping this out and continuing it to your March 20th meeting. When the board wants to issue into continuations for site plan review that are going to change the deadlines for your decision, you're required to do so in writing, clearly stating that timeframe for your future decision. I proofed the proposed agreement with the applicant's engineer, and they agreed that all the terms are reasonable, but effectively, the applicant, at least 14 days prior to your March 20th meeting, will give us notice that they want to proceed, or if they'd like to withdraw. If they choose to withdraw, we can process that. If they would like to proceed, at that time, we will trigger the engineering review, and I'll prepare a formal report on the completeness of the application and the contents, as well as any proposed conditions or findings. Additionally, at that time, they'll put down the deposit. And further, to protect the board's right to fully review the application and provide us enough time to make recommendations, the statutory requirements will reset on the date they provide us with written notice. Written notice will be a simple email over to Leanne, just to give us a heads up at least two weeks ahead of your March 20th meeting, but that gives the, the select board and the administrator's office ample time, a little more than 45 days, to work out the details.
Excellent. All right, so does any of the board have any questions on Alec's report?
No.
No questions.
All right, so I believe we actually need two motions for this. So the, the first motion would be to authorize me to sign on behalf of the board, correct, Alec, to continue? And then the second motion would be to continue the hearing to a date certain, which is March 20th at 6:30 at the same location. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, so recognizing that for these purposes, the associate member is a full voting member, would somebody like to make a motion to authorize me to sign on behalf of the board, an extension once it's voted on by the board?
So moved.
Hearing a first, do we have a second?
I will second.
Excellent, hearing a first and a second, any discussion? All right, hearing no discussion, I'm calling a vote, and it's by roll call, Mr. Russell?
Russell, aye.
Ms. Dack?
Dack, aye.
Mr. Demalia?
Demalia, aye.
All right, so the, I would also like to ask for a motion to continue the public hearing to, to March 20th at the same location, so March 20th at 6:30 PM. Would somebody like to make that motion?
So moved.
Hearing a first, do we have a second?
I will second.
Hearing a second, any additional discussion? Calling a, a roll call vote, Mr. Russell?
Russell, aye.
Ms. Dack?
Dack, aye.
Mr. Demalia?
Demalia, aye.
And the chair is aye, the, the public hearing is continued to the date in the motion. All right, thank you everyone for that. So moving down the list, we have an A and R for 14 Cruz Road. Is that what you're going to speak to tonight?
Yes.
All right, well, you're welcome to come on up to the table and tell us what you're looking for. And then after that, we'll have our, we'll have the planner give a report.
Give him those books out.
Go ahead, get off that bench.
Yeah, history isn't always comfortable.
So I don't know, I submitted this electronically, so I assume you folks have seen it, but they said to bring, bring this with me for either.
Yep, absolutely.
Look at or assign or whatever. There's a bylaw there, then it's print.
So can you just tell us a little bit about what you're planning on doing?
Yeah, so this is the, this is where the farmhouse is. Glasses.
Just state your name, please, for the record.
Oh, yes. Yeah, so parcel 102A. Yeah, so I just, I want to enlarge that parcel, but that the farmhouse sits on. My dad owned this. He, he had no plans of, you know, leaving it or anything, so he didn't really think it over, but I think when he built the other house, he had to split this into a different piece, so he just stuck it on a very small piece of land, which didn't seem to make much sense to us and where we're at now, so. And this will give us enough land to, to stay in an agricultural. 61A.
Alec, have you had a, an opportunity to review this plan?
Yes, yes, I am.
Excellent. And just for the, the benefit of the public, because it's also a change from how we did these historically, now that we have a, a town. We used to just pull out the checklist and run through it on the spot, which wasn't necessarily a great use of everybody's time, and it also didn't do a good job dealing with complex issues like, like the merger doctrine. So now what we do is, we have our, our town planner provide us with a report on compliance to those requirements. So Alec, based upon your, your view of this parcel, do you believe it complies with the requirements for a A and R?
Yes, I believe the applicant has put forward an acceptable A and R plan, noting that parcel X has the appropriate delineations, not necessarily a buildable lot, and noting that they are not creating any non-conforming laws as a result of this process.
Which, which lines on this are the new lines?
All right, it's this, this, this piece right here, so this was the original line?
Mm-hmm.
And so it's this piece right here that's added to this.
Okay, so it's that piece that's added.
Okay.
And.
Parcel X.
And Alec, because the, the parcel, the large parcel isn't otherwise being touched, there isn't an issue with any of the frontage or anything on that?
No, I couldn't come across anything that would create a larger non-conformity than already is. This lot would typically be termed a flag lot, which most bylaws, allegedly yours included, have provisions that would allow buildability at a future date and time.
Yeah, right, there's 200 feet of frontage here that connects to the backland right here, which was, I think, from what I was told, I was, we'd have to do it.
It looks like it's listed at 15768. Not that I think it necessarily matters for this application.
Yeah, it's, yeah, um, yeah, it's not, it's actually 200 feet.
Are you suggesting that there's an error with the plan there?
No, I don't believe so. This is just surveyor jargon here that I don't think I understand, but he, the survey was well aware of it also, he, he measured it and made sure that it was right, so I don't think it's a problem.
All right, does, does anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant or for the, the town planner? Anything from Ms. Dack or Mr. Demalia?
Nothing from me.
And nothing from?
Nothing from either.
And nothing from Mr. Russell. So with that said, we're going to need two motions because of everybody's travel schedules. So we're going to need a motion to authorize me to sign the plan on behalf of the planning board, and then we're going to need a motion to endorse the A and R. So let's, let's go in, in the other order. So would somebody like to make a motion to endorse the A and R that's been presented for 14 Cruz Road?
I will make the motion.
Right, hearing a first, do we have a second?
I will second.
Any additional discussion? Right, hearing none, I'm calling a vote, and it's a roll call vote, so Ms. Dack?
Dack, aye.
Mr. Demalia?
Demalia, aye.
And the chair is aye, so that approves the endorsement. So next, I'd like to ask the board to make a motion to authorize the chair to endorse the plan on behalf of the board.
I will make that motion.
Hearing a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Calling, any discussion? Calling a vote, and it's a roll call vote, so Ms. Dack?
Dack, aye.
Mr. Demalia?
Demalia, aye.
And the chair is aye, so I'll be authorized that on behalf of the board. All right, so do you have a Sharpie?
I don't have a Sharpie, but I have, I know, let me see if there's.
Yeah, it'd be a lot better if you could find a Sharpie.
Next, I grab one, would you like me to?
Do you have to provide them with a letter from the board attesting to that vote to authorize you for the registry's purposes?
The minutes.
The minutes?
Yep.
Yes, I will have that prepared and provided to Monday.
Yep, because you'll need the minutes along with the signature, else the registry will reject it, so. Okay. So we don't have a Sharpie here?
No, I can grab one though.
Black.
I have black, too.
Yeah.
Sorry, I.
You need to sign it to my wire, then we can work on this, but it would, uh.
Yeah, you need to sign the bywire.
Only, I think the Sharpie would probably be better than that.
No.
Today's the.
Day.
Actually, if I need to go back through a document, I'll, we'll start if we can. All right, but yeah, that's, that won't do you anything until you get a copy of the minutes, so.
So you guys are going to hang on to these, or do you need them all, or?
Well, it's ultimately up to you, if you prefer to hang on to it and then just give them all the minutes, or?
I can do that.
Whatever you, whatever you prefer.
Yeah, I will prepare that letter and the minutes for you. Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, so there's nothing else I need to do, then you're going to get the registry deeds also, and it sounds like.
You need to bring this to the registry.
Oh, I need to bring it to them.
Yep.
Yeah, you just need the letter, because the whole board wasn't here to sign.
All right. Yep. And.
Add a registry to it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think the surveyor said he was going to do it, so. All right, great.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your service.
All right, so do we have any items under old business? Any updates from you? Well, I guess actually we didn't do the planner's report, so old business and the planner's report together.
Sounds good, Nate. I'm going to go ahead and just pull up for everybody. One of the things that in speaking our regular, regular weekly meeting, we had talked about rapidly approaching town meeting, you know, we're still a few months away, but it's always good to kind of scope these things out. I'm going to bring up on my screen a, a draft schedule that I put together. Can everyone see a little, little box here with some dates and some words on it?
You're going to need to zoom in a lot for us to be able to see that. There you go.
How's that look? Okay. So we're scoping out to your March meetings at this point. I think by March 20th, we can kick off your accessory dwelling unit hearing. Of course, you'll also notably have the continuation for Paper Crane that you just voted on moments ago. I've attempted to step these out so that we're not doing more than one zoning bylaw public hearing per evening, so that way you can parse them out individually, structure your time, and we're not taking up too much of your evening. But assuming we don't need further continuations of Paper Crane, or that if we do, we would kick that out more than two weeks, on your April 2nd meeting, we would only address the battery energy storage system, and then on April 17th, we would address provisions to your special permit and site plan review based on the rules and regulations we're going to prepare for site plan review. To give you updates on these individually, the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, Francois and I have been tasked to work together. I was just emailing him earlier today, saying, let's put our heads back together and work on draft number three at this stage. Notably, the Attorney General's Office has agreed to offer preliminary reviews of accessory dwelling unit bylaws to prove them for compliance, so we'll work to get a draft together in the coming weeks, get that sent off for, for review in advance of your March 20th public hearing. Notably, on the accessory dwelling units as well, the state CMR has been released, which provides the state building code guidance on accessory dwelling units, so we now have something to prove the model against, confirm that it will in fact comply, and it's great to see those regulations promulgated because it makes our job a lot easier. By March 20th, we'll have a clear picture of the final language, we'll have something presented to you, and assuming approval on that night, we'll move into the marketing phase, so we'll start putting together a couple flyers to explain what the change to the law are and why you're bringing forward new revisions. Otherwise, your battery energy storage bylaw will continue to workshop coming off of your previous town meeting. I've met with resident in the community who was interested and who on town meeting floor did have some feedback. He has agreed to review your old bylaw, and I've offered some feedbacks that he was overall receptive of, how we could better market the bylaw, not necessarily change the content, but better help the public understand. And then finally, as I said, the special permit and site plan revisions, those come about based on the rules and regulations that you will eventually adopt for site plan review. You'll note that I don't have anything scheduled necessarily for your May 7th meeting, because we're still many months out from that, but what I would propose is that the board consider hosting an info session. I find that to be effective, is that the, the first, the last meeting before town meeting, the board hosts an open opportunity, usually for a half hour, 45 minutes prior to the actual planning board meeting, an opportunity for the public to come see the articles that you spent time with. Of course, each of these public hearings is noticed and available, but oftentimes, not everyone gets the opportunity to attend that meeting, so we hope, we host a separate opportunity with additional time for question and answer.
Excellent. Any questions from the board on the, the timeline there or the things on it?
No questions from me.
Hi, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You should have seen how fast I just ran across the house. But if we are holding the large-scale, full-town info session and sort of public event that has traditionally had planning board articles as part of it, is hosting a separate info meeting going to be overkill or just additional information? If you've already got something on the books, a separate event where you have a history of presenting and giving the opportunity for people to get info, then you're already covering it, and there's no need to take additional time for the board.
All right, yeah, we do that, we, we send it on Facebook Live, because of McGlutton's punishment, and, no, and I look forward to doing that.
Okay. Sounds great. You let me know the date and time of that, and I'll make myself available to help out as well.
Thank you very much. I do expect you to be there, and I look forward to it.
Excellent. Any, any updates for us on the DLTA requests?
Yes, the DLTA requests were filed earlier this week. We're expecting a decision in the coming weeks for award letters. As previously discussed, one of those award letters will activate additional state grant funding for a project that the select board will be working on, but additionally, and most relevant to, to this team, this is how we will be conducting the public convenance for the revisions to your commercial districts, so. So it's a pleasure to work with the administrator's team, putting those together, put together the language, help scope those out, and prove them ahead of time with the MRPC team. They express their excitement to work on the projects, and I look forward to working with them on them.
Awesome, thanks. And just noting for the board that there's an MRPC meeting tomorrow night, and we also need to backfill the seat for the alternate, which I believe is actually an appointment made by the select board. So we'll, we'll need to keep moving that along, whether that ends up being a select board member, or a member from the planning board, or a delegate for Nate or Alec. It looks like Nate has his hand up.
I just wanted to remind Alec to let you guys know that the RFP for the Sanford project is out. I'll give him the floor on that.
Sounds great, so yeah, the procurement went out for that. I've actually already gotten a couple emails in from interested consultants. Overall, some excited momentum towards that project. Very fun stuff when you get to work on an overlay district. Obviously, there is some local sensitivity, and we saw that on social media, so I think this will be a fairly heavily publicized project, but with the procurement out the door, we're well on our way to actually getting a consultant in hand and looking at kickoff meeting likely in the month of March, if not the start of April.
Excellent. All right, so I believe that covers old business, administrative matters, and the planner's report, so.
I think you skipped the Williamsville Road.
Oh, I did, I did. Let's go back to new business, Williamsville Road, National Grid Trees Update. That's, that's also Alec.
I will kick this one back to Leanne, I think you were going to cover that one, right?
Yeah, Travis, our DPW director, was appointed the alternate tree warden. His intent is to verify the health of the trees. He will consult with an arborist if needed, and then determine eligibility, eligibility for emergency removal.
In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, towns under 5,000 people do not need specified qualifications for their tree warden, or alternate tree warden.
Excellent, thank you for that. Any questions from the board about that? Yep, Mr. Russell?
Travis, Travis could still consult with an arborist if he wants to, even though we're less than 5,000 people.
Yep, correct.
I mean, to Nate's comment, is that right?
Have you tried to stop Travis from doing anything that he wanted to? No, I'm joking, but yes, understood. Travis will speak with an arborist if needed.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions from the board? All right, so moving on to matters not reasonably anticipated by chair. I mean, we did a good job anticipating everything. Now, there are some interesting things coming up on the MRPC agenda for the public, it's available on the website, for the board, I'll send a link out with all the documents once they're released for the meeting. There's some stuff, specifically the, the grant list, that's worth taking a look at. Uh, especially now that we have some really good folks in, in-house to help us get some of those grants. Um, so with that, any, uh, any comments from anybody on the board or members of the public, uh, appearing online? All right, hearing none, that moves us on to our final item, which is adjournment, so would somebody like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Hearing a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, non-debatable. Uh, so calling a vote, uh, the, Ms. Dack?
Dack, aye.
Mr. Demalia?
Demalia, aye.
And the chair is aye, we are adjourned at seven oh seven PM.